Mr. Godrick?
Here.
Mrs. Fanner?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Petrazina?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Dr. Rodrak?
Here.
Ms. Fayella?
Here.
Mr. Sun?
Here. Will you please rise, Mr. Ken Hansel? Will you please take this, please? Detail thing up forward. I have a whole detail to do. These thirty-one words affirm the values and freedom of the American flag. We, as we pledge a loyalty to our country at my command, will all ex-military please salute, all civilians, please remove headgear, place your hand over your heart, ten, hut, present, hums. Aye, for the religion to do the right, and the sake of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living end, justice for all. Order, hums. Thank you very much. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting of laws enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies having any business in their interests to discuss or act upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice in this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, district website, and advertised in the Daily Register, the board's official newspaper, on January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. Thank you. May I still see the representative before, please?
Yeah. So, we're gonna start off a little bit by talking about what happened in the recent past. So, first off, we had Key Club, Best Buddies, and the hockey team, and they did a toy drive fundraiser that lasted, that started on November twentieth and ended on Friday, December eighth, and that was a very successful fundraiser. Posta also had a guest speaker, who was Dr. Arnold McCallay, on December seventh, and he talked about his career in medicine, students got advice on possible careers in healthcare. And then, all winter sports have also started their seasons, which he is gonna talk about shortly. Moving on to this week, we have Winter Spirit Week, which began yesterday, and today's theme was Candy King Day, yesterday was Bolt Express Day, tomorrow is Plural Day, Thursday is Wolf's Birthday, and then festive Friday is gonna be the day of the pep rally. And on the pep rally, we'll have the student faculty basketball game, we'll be returning, and there will also be the edition of Family Feud Game. Yesterday, on Monday, the cookies and cheesecakes from the class of twenty-twenty-four's David's Cookies fundraiser arrived at the school. This was a fundraiser that ran from November sixth to November twentieth, and it was a major success. Students will be able to enjoy their delicious baked goods for the holidays. Also, the MTHS newspaper, The Folio, published their first edition for the twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four school year, and this newspaper offers a reflection of the diverse interests and talents within the next world community. Then, Make-A-Wish is also currently selling candy cane grams during lunch for this week, and the candy canes will be delivered to students' home rooms the next morning.
So, the ice hockey team is holding a fundraiser this week at Don Shinkin in Pine Brook, and the team is gonna get a portion of the proceeds when the fundraiser is mentioned to the staff. Now, moving on to all the sports. So, the girls' basketball teams started their season last week, they opened at home against Chatham. They had a rough start to the season, they're currently zero and three, but they play right off tomorrow at four P.M. home. The boys' basketball team also started their season last week and hold a record of one and two, beating Kinnon last Saturday. They play Morris Hills away tomorrow at seven P.M. Bowling is currently holding strong with an undefeated record of seven and O. Senior Eli Coughlin leads the team with a season-high score of two-hundred-and-sixty-four. Their next match is tomorrow versus Morris County School of Technology at Woodland Lane at four P.M. Ice hockey started their season with a tie record of two and two. Junior Logan, juniors Logan Engel and sophomore Aiden Stepien lead the team in five holes apiece. They play tomorrow versus Roxbury at Menumbrea at four P.M. The wrestling team also competed in their first tournament this past Saturday. Senior Luca Bellio plays first in the heavyweight division, but the team currently holds a record of zero, oh and O. Next, we will take on Tannehill Park away Thursday at seven P.M. Boys swim holds a record of one and one while girls swim is oh and two. At the most recent meet, Alexis Friedman plays first in the fifty-yard free for the girls, and for the boys, Dylan Greg plays first in both the two-hundred-yard free and five-hundred-yard free. Curtis Wayne took first in the five-fifty-yard free. Hayden Atfire finished first in the hundred-yard free, and the two-hundred and four-hundred-yard free relays also placed more first, and they swim again tomorrow against Morris Hills at CPM at five P.M. And the winter track team, track and field team, opened their season at the Gardner Relays at Drew University this past Saturday. The team had nine total place finishers, and the boys varsity four-by-eight-hundred team earned a silver medal. So now, for future events, the Italian Honor Society will be having a candy gram sale to celebrate the new year, the week we come back from winter break. And on Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, marks the beginning of midterms. As a result of feedback from staff, students, and parents, more provisions have been made to the midterm schedule. They will go on for four days with students having two classes per day, and these will also be half-days. Students will attend class normally if they do not have midterm. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, presentations, we have tonight, the VFW, which, Ken Hansel, would you like to come?
I surely will. Do I use the microphone or?
No, just use the mic. He can pick it up if you want.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ken Hansel. I'm commander of VFW Post five-four-eight-one, and I just wanna say that the VFW is partnered with a lot of organizations in town. One of them is the many students and teachers and the Board of Education here at Montville. All right? We do things, in fact, just this past Veterans Day, we used the auditorium at the high school for our Veterans Day event. Those who were not there missed an event of the decade, believe me, it was great. Also, we also do seminary flags with Central School. We do other veteran events throughout the year. One of the events we partner with is the VFW Essay Contest, and that would be a patriotic essay contest, so that's what we're going to give awards out for tonight. I'll start out with the Patriots Pen. Patriots Pen is an essay contest that we sponsor, that is open to any student in the sixth, seventh, or eighth grades, counting national and state levels. The awards that are given out are over one million dollars. The national winners receives a five-thousand-dollar scholarship, and the New York State winner gets five hundred dollars. Our post-winning entry goes to the district and county competition for other rewards. Post five-four-eight-one's committee chairman is Joe Cole, and he has been working with Mr. Richard Cosenty and some of his colleagues at Robert R. Lazar Middle School on this year's program. This essay contest encourages young minds to examine American's history, along with their experiences in modern American society. They draft a three-to-four-hundred-word essay expressing their views based on a patriotic theme, which is chosen by the VFW Commander in Chief, the National Commander. This year's theme was how, how are you inspired by America? How are you inspired by America? That was the challenge for this year. Just so you know, last year's winners, one came from Wisconsin, they won five thousand; the second place came from Minnesota, and the third Missouri. One of these years, I'm gonna read out New Jersey, okay? That's my, that's my goal. And that's the goal, I'll just let you know that the Montville VFW, five-four-eight-one, we have a hundred and forty-one members from all different, all different ages, although our average age is about seventy-three, but our hearts are twenty-one, just so you know that. And no one, no one does more for veterans than the VFW, just to, just to get that through. Just one other thing, this year, the effort that our members put in, if you notice that we are wearing a red-white-blue hat with the red pink, that is only earned by five percent of the posts in the country. Out of seven hundred posts this past year, Montville VFW was number five in meeting all the goals of the VFW in the community, in visiting hospitals, and also in membership, and everything that a VFW does to help veterans, benefits and all that sort of thing. So, we're number five out of seven hundred, so we're very proud of that. An extension of that is participation and support of essay contests, so that's where we are today. That was my commercial, thank you. entries are judged on knowledge of the theme, theme development, and clarity of ideas. Tonight, we will present post-first, second, and third-place winners with cash awards and frame certificates. Essay Chairman, Mr. Joe Cole, will now present this year's awards. Third-place Patriots Pen winner is Katie Hawn. There's a frame certificate and fifty dollars. Second-place winner, Jordan Polinski, certificate and seventy-five dollars. First-place winner, Alessandra, is that the way to say it? Thank you, Delcatus. And she also won the district or county, which is ten posts, of which I am the commander of also, but she won that third prize, and she'll be going to another ceremony in January to accept that prize. Congratulations. Double congratulations. We're going to take a break here and take a little more time. We have a two, two-and-a-half-minute video that we'll be showing, which introduces and tells you a little about Voice of Democracy, the high school awards. So, this is a little story of Voice of Democracy, so somebody else will talk instead of me for a while.
The Voice of Democracy parade of winners was very intense. I think all of us kinda entered into this room in the facility, not knowing how much support there'd be. We walked in there, and there were hundreds of people clapping. I was not prepared for that. All, all fifty-three of us were just already over the moon, and just be here, and DC was an all-expenses-paid trip, so we were really too stressed out about who actually won.
Up on stage, like, your heart was beating, like, so fast, and you're so excited, you're kind of nervous. And so, I kept waiting, I was like, I'll be next, and I was like, no, I'll be next, and I was like, no. And they said, will these five students come up? And so, then we went up, and I was like, oh my gosh, oh my gosh. And they slowly kind of ended off, and I was like, my heart was beating so fast. And I was like, looking out into all the faces. And then, they announced the second-place winner, and I like, I couldn't believe it. It was incredible. Oh, yes, it was incredible. Winning this scholarship, it does open my choice of colleges, so it definitely will help very much.
So, our Voice of Democracy program is a seventy-three-year program that we instituted to foster true patriotism with our nation's youth. They'll write a short essay, and we judge them on the portion of that actual essay, and they have a shot at earning up to thirty thousand dollars. Our nation's youth have an incredible opportunity to come to Washington DC, all-expenses-paid trip. We take them around, show them the history of our country, and see some great museums.
I'm surprised, noticed that all my flights to DC were paid for, was just amazing. I wasn't expecting it, never been to DC before, so it was pretty crazy.
Seeing all of the monuments around Washington DC, it did affect me very heavily, very powerful.
Then we sit down, and we award the scholarships, the second-to-last night that we're there. Our education system, especially our higher end, is very expensive. This money that these students can make, can really lift that burden off the parents. The students find themselves, even though they're kind of nervous when they first show up, realize all of a sudden, they have fifty-two other friends instantly, because they've all had that shared experience, so it doesn't matter where they've come from. It seems like a lot of the barriers and walls that possibly are set up at home, they come crashing down very hard. So, our Voice of Democracy program really exposes them to, to a bigger world, much bigger than their rural hometown. Gives them a shot at figuring out what they wanted to, you know, maybe going into journalism, going into government. It's breathtaking, very refreshing, and gives me hopeful sense in our, in our interest in these young students.
Voice of Democracy program is amazing.
This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. To be here with kids from all around the country, you should definitely do it. You should definitely sign up for the Voice of Democracy.
Okay, thank you. That's the national level, that's the state winner goes, and it's thirty-five thousand dollars now, it's not thirty. So, looking forward to next year, we're looking for many, many of our high schools, the high school level of Voice of Democracy, we're looking for many candidates to apply and put in, put in their essays. Okay. Joe Cole has been working with Montville High School's social studies teacher, Justin Scupari, and Mr. Tubbs, Montville Township's public school supervisor of humanities, K through twelve. The theme this year was, what are the greatest attributes of our democracy? Joe will now make the presentations. Our third-place winner is Montville Township High School senior, Sharbi R. Kamna. She will receive the frame certificate and one hundred dollars. That's a tenth grader on that, from the high school, not bad. I don't know, tenth grader. Our second-place winner is Anisha Melenti. She will receive a certificate and a hundred and fifty dollars. Our first-place post-winner is Ananya Bhatt. She receives a frame certificate, two hundred dollars. That's a twelfth grader, all right. Well, I wanna thank everyone here, appreciate the time you've given us to do this at this meeting, and also, I want to congratulate all our winners, I wanna thank the members of the Board of Education, and I wanna recognize these young adults at this meeting. Thank you very much, I just wanted to. Did you sign the release? You did. Can all the winners come up, please? Yeah, three hundred certificates, come on up. All the rights are right there. Oh, these, not, like, go honor. Anybody else? Parents, friends? Congratulations. Citizens of tomorrow, leading our country.
Hi, Karen. I just have a question. Can you tell us how, how the children get to participate, how they're exposed to this wonderful scholarship program, and how we can attract more young people to write essays for the VFW?
Testimony. Yes, early in the school year, we meet with Doug Sanford, and we go over what our goals are as far as participation, and there is a forum, and next year, it will be all online, both the Scholars App, I don't know if you have a Scholars App in your school, this will be part of the Scholars App program. And we meet with, he assigns David Tubbs and Scupari, and also Cosenty at the Central School level, and we send out the, the applications, and the students just write it and submit it, and then we have a judging panel at our level, at the post level, and we go from there. So, we are looking for, we had twenty-eight from Central School and a number, a smaller number from the high school, so we really would like to encourage. We've got some posts that submit hundreds, so we're gonna, that's our goal for next year. To keep this hat, we have, well, we keep this hat in perpetuity, but to get another one, we have to do better than the last year, so that's gonna be part of it, participation in programs such as this. Because the more you get to apply, the more you get to put to the next level, to the county level. So, for the fifteen applications, you get to put one at the next level, so you get a better chance. And we definitely want to see someone from New Jersey up there, right? Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. Well, last year, we had Teacher of the Year, representing, state, state winner, so we can do it.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, appreciate that. Sure. So, just following up on that, as you see, we've got a great four months of school, classes have been running well, contests and essays have been going really well, our athletic team's just started, as you just heard, they're just on their way right now, and we've had a lot of concerts, holiday concerts, and preschool programs in the past few weeks, so everything's going on at the different buildings, and we're really excited about that. I have shared with the education, the different, the progress we're making on the goals, on the district goals, so we're doing well on our goals, and we're moving forward in the right direction with those. On December twelfth, we, we had the school referendum that was defeated. The administration team will now reconvene with the Board of Education and the administrators, and work on a plan of how we proceed moving forward as space, security, and HBSC issues are still before us, and many other products that we need to address in the near future. As we figure this all out, we'll give the Board of Education a prize. I'd like to thank all the community members that were working on our different committees for their input during this whole process, and all the volunteers that helped out to get us up to that day. It was a long process, and I appreciate all the efforts. Also, I just gotta say, it was a long process for the whole year that we went through. I met so many interesting people, I talked to a lot of great people, having excellent conversations, and I just gotta tell you, I definitely felt the town pride, and definitely a pride for all the schools as I engaged in all these conversations. So, some of the conversations were a little challenging, a little difficult, but the pride came through in all, in all different ways, so I appreciate it, and the community a little more this past year.
Do you have any timeline for when we want to reconvene for discussions with the board?
So, right now, we're just gathering input from the community members, from the Board of Education, and others, so as that starts to come in, and we'll just continue talking as a board.
Like, January, or when can we start, or February?
No, yeah, we start talking a little in January, yeah, absolutely.
And just to point out a couple other good news, so Cedar Hill, Valley View, William Mason, Woodmont, all have successful toy drives, which really are a big help to the kids who receive those toys. If you don't know anything about them, the toy drives that occur at Centaur, the recipients definitely love them. Also, just wanna point out, there's our, congratulations to Teacher of the Year, Karen Borrell, and Educational Services Professional Leader, Catherine Alessi. Okay, moving on to Section, Section G, Committee Reports. Karen, so ladies and finance?
So, ladies and finance, we're gonna be met right before the seniors' public meeting. The committee discussed the financial position of the district, as well as the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school budget, and will follow the lead of Dr. Corwin and the administration in terms of moving forward and writing the new board.
Hold on a second, sure. Hi, my two students. You all have been so well with your essays, but we don't need to keep you here, if you really wanna get home so you can get some sleep and get ready for class in the morning, feel free to go ahead and take off. Okay, let's move on to Curriculum, Michelle. Your report. Policy, Joe. Your report is here. Okay, Communications, Mike Palmer. Safety, Mike Rappaport. Okay, Delegate Liaisons, Karen, University School Board.
So, on Saturday, there was a school court, so convened legislative committee meeting. We had the pleasure of the attendance of Senator Vinny Pau, who's Chair of the Senate Education Committee. He is definitely a friend of education, and we're very happy that he's re-elected. We went through a whole list of bills that, bills that have been signed, bills that are on the move, bills that were conditionally vetoed, and entertain, Senator Pau contains questions, just stand and leave.
Okay, Morris County School Board, Michelle?
I'll mention, the next meeting's gonna be on virtual on Thursday, February eighth. It's actually interesting, we're doing roundtables on a variety of subjects, you register now online, but subjects like the pilot program, new interactive programs for schools, how we can order to this, and how the school board can sign legislation, so I'll give some reminders about that. The last meeting was December seventh, it was a hybrid meeting about finding coordination and controversy. Last one of them is not even to attend, but I know Joe was there, if you have any feedback.
I was agreeing, the meeting we had, actually, at Woodmont High School, some students before had a meeting, and it was, and then we had a small group discussion, and we wore some hats.
Can you, can you, like, go on for a moment? So, Morris County?
Can I just add one, please, for a minute? I forgot to mention that, visiting us virtually down in Canton County, I sent Canton County meeting in person and visiting us virtually, where's Joe Godrick? I acknowledge him in that.
Okay, so, Morris County Educational Services, Doug?
Uh, yes, we got thirteen, and just a little over, we're, there's the parent conference and the reports, and also the reviews to the transportation contracts.
And then, Reverend's?
Reverend's, I'm playing with Pennsyls, but they're all having their new parenting program for January, for the seventh of October.
Charlie, Athletic Coasters?
We're completing that, getting a meeting in January.
Thank you. Liaisons, the schools, Karen, Cedar Hill?
Uh, no report that they do have a meeting coming up in January.
Charlie, Hilldale? Valley View, Joe?
No report, just a meeting in January.
John, William Mason?
Same as the other, just meeting in January.
Come on, create. I think I'm gonna have, remember, they can be charting on things, I can still very much remember. Mike Palmer, Woodmont?
Same thing, go, moving to you.
Okay. Bizarre, Christine?
No, I'm bored.
Okay. High School, Mike Rappaport, Michelle, government?
No report, no report.
Okay, Ad-Hoc Committee is negotiating, Karen, NTAA negotiations?
Yes, so, we're in the process of exchanging raffles, and we have a scheduled meeting set for January forty-second.
MTAA, Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, just been talking to me, and we'll be meeting you up in the first of the year.
And Joe, MTSIA?
He doesn't appear again.
Okay, sounds reasonable. Okay, first public participation session, anything on the agenda? Do you have anything that you'd like to discuss that's on the agenda? Please come over to the microphone, state your name, comments. Seeing none, I'll close it. Ask for a- As for motion for center solutions, I through N, five through N?
Well, so.
Seven. Okay, any question on minutes, section I?
Raffles.
Section J? Section K, finance? Section L, personnel? M, curriculum? N, policy? All of those?
Ms. Deppman?
Yes.
Mr. Rapaport?
Yes.
Dr. Cortelina?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes, he's there, I know you want him.
Mrs. Fanna?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazina?
Yes.
Dr. Motter?
Yes.
Okay, no close session, old business, new business, general board, all our business?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm on it. Yeah, I'm just a little surprised.
Can you use the mic and come for a second?
Let me just tell you, I don't like talking too loud. I'm a little surprised that, you know, feedback and discussion on the, that when, when this is between January, and Tom, that mentioned it earlier, but I don't know why we need to wait until January to discuss that. You know, it failed, the board failed. The administration did a great job in hiring professionals and going out and marketing. And, you know, they, their jobs do best in school. They thought that was best in school. It's our job to know what the town wants and what the town's willing to do. And, you know, we were wrong on that. I just think we need to kind of accept responsibility for that a little bit. We need to avoid the subject. And, you know, I've heard feedback, you know, a lot of things on why they might have failed and things like that. And one, I think, multiple people, different groups of people have told me, the order of questions was almost insulting to them. And they thought we were trying to trick them into voting yes on one because of the security and safety on the two. I don't think anyone's motive or agenda was for to do that. That was perception out there. I think that we failed them there on not having any public discussion on that issue. We should have discussed it publicly, we did not. You know, I would like to just open up, I have other board members' opinions. I would, you know, they think it might have gone wrong, or could have done, we could have done differently. One thing that I think I was a little bit upset about, I thought we, I thought we rushed it a little bit, obviously the timeline wouldn't suggest that. There's eleven months in between when we first started discussing it, and when we went out to vote. But, you know, when we, there were a lot of hurdles along the way. You know, it was, let's propose this, and that, and this because we have to get in front of the state to get our state subsidy money. And, you know, and a lot of us thought, yeah, that's a great idea. Let's go in with a bid project, see what kind of state funding we can get. And then from there, we cut the project down to a more feasible, you know, project that might actually have a chance to pass. And, you know, there's always one analysis, we should grow, let's just, let's just go through the next hurdle, the next hurdle. And then when we came time to vote, you know, I know I went on publicly and thought we should do something differently. I think some others might have, you know, supported that idea. But, you know, we were rushed. I felt like we were rushed into voting yes for that. And I think there should have been more analysis done. And I don't want to say it's equally mindful, I voted yes for it too. So it's just as much mindful to everybody else. But I'd like to hear other board members' ideas, feedback, and discussion. I don't think we should wait for January or a future date. And I think we should start planning immediately. I'm not saying go out and be, I'm saying start planning immediately for something else. I hear that number two was something that the town could, you know, could grasp. The town liked, you know, the idea of getting state subsidy money, not using our own money. But, and again, it goes back to one of my first points, was that they felt tricked. So maybe a real area of the question, if this more project could pass, I don't think we need to delay years to go out again. And I think if we resized the project, it would have a greater potential to pass. That's just, you know, some of my thoughts, I may have.
No, I appreciate that, you know, and it is worth having those discussions. Although I'm confused because you said that things weren't discussed, and then the knowledge that we talked about for ten months, and for, at any point during those discussions, you know, anyone could have raised serious concerns about, you know, parts of it. We did have to work through the system, but I think I just didn't hear the, you know, any real concerns about it until the very end, when, you know, as the date approached, we then heard some significant concerns. But, that said, you do bring up a lot of valid points, it is worth having discussion. I think right now, though, this being what one keep out, we're still collecting some comments from people. I know a couple of members have sent in comments that they've heard. I don't think you sent in any comments, did you send any comments into Tom? That you've heard, or any collection of comments? I know a couple of people have. But if you hadn't sent in emails, I just, I guess, I didn't. Any board members who haven't sent in their ideas, it would be helpful if we received them. That way we can bring them all together and collect them up and see what happened. I have definitely heard some of these complaints. But yeah, I mean, I, it is worth having these discussions. How much we can do right now, I'm not sure. But at least we can start thinking about things. Michelle, you want to say something?
Listen, I agree that, you know, discussion should clearly have. I did not have the same feeling that we touched through the process. I think there were several stages throughout where we voted. There was, there was, you know, public input, you know, the board had discussed it. And I think we went through the process, we're getting to the referendum the way we haven't passed, the way other districts do. So, you know, we've clearly defined and specified needs that the district was trying to address. So I, I didn't have that feeling at all. That being said, you know, I think it's important to get feedback from the public. As, you know, I've heard feedback afterwards of people being devastated that it didn't pass. You know, people who were enthusiastic before, and I've met other people who were, you know, happy that it didn't pass purely. And I think it's important to get, you know, that feedback from the comment. I think that the administration really tried to give every opportunity to the public to express any of those concerns beforehand, which is why I'm, you know, disturbed by that, I guess, the sneaky comment of the two. Because I know that that was addressed at all the public meetings, you know, where the questions were. And I think we all know, as a board, that that was never the intention. I think that they, you know, my understanding alone was that number one was the top priority, that was the whole of the funds, they were gonna put that out there for, this was the reason it was done in that way. Number two is still very important, but based in how we did the last, you know, referendum and so forth, I think it was based on that. But if the public felt differently, then it's important for us to understand that, certainly for the future right now, whether it's going forward or in the long term. So I think many of the points you make are valid. But, you know, some of them, I think I disagree with some of them. But that's, you know, why we're here, you know, to have these opinion discussions. And I think that Tom, Dr. Gorman's, you know, method for moving forward well over the next couple of months and having discussions properly is the right way for us to go.
I would point out that while we may disagree with some people's opinions or perceptions, I think every person who has a perception or opinion is a valid.
I hope I can bring that, because I definitely believe that.
Yeah, you know, every person, every person needs to be heard. Every person's opinion matters, and whatever, you know, Karen? Anyone over here? Yeah?
Thanks, Dave. First, I want to thank Dr. Gorman for doing really an outstanding job communicating with the community. Whether they disagree with us or not, or you, you always listened. And there was never anything that, you know, if you couldn't answer a question, they had the opportunity to email you. So I just want to say I appreciate that, and I know community members did as well. I think what John is saying is that even when we had the meeting in the summertime, we were going to, we were planning on voting for, I think, September. And I brought up during the, during our public session that I was concerned with the community not understanding everything. This was only like thirty days. And if I remember, Tom acknowledged that, and I think you do too, Dave. But there was a concern about, well, if we don't vote, then things might be more expensive, and it'll go through the summertime, it'll disrupt the kids. So I think that's, could be what John is talking about. And luckily, we waited. But I think, I was also thinking that we were gonna kind of send everything to Trenton and then see what money they would provide us. And it was very small compared to Madison that got, you know, a fifty million dollar for one vote, and they got like eighteen million or something like that, and we got such a plenty. So, you know, I was, would have hoped that maybe we would have downsized it or brainstormed more, or maybe spoke with the community instead of rushing that. Because I do feel confident that the second question, if it was first, security is so important. And I do feel even the senior citizens would have said yes to that. And we did get a lot more percentage money from the state. So I really feel like question two would have passed. Maybe, you know, just the three cafeterias, the multipurpose rooms, maybe. But I just feel like we should have really stopped and really kind of explored more and spoken to community members. So I understand what John is saying, I had the same feedback from him. And so I appreciate you, John, being, you know, thinking about this because I, and I did communicate to Tom and Matt and Dave about concerns on vacation. But it was important for me to do that. But I just wanted to kind of back up what John was saying.
Well, it is important, and, you know, I'm very, I'm very happy that you did write it all down. You and Mike both wrote down lists of things that we've heard, and it's very helpful to the administration and the whole board as we try to understand what happened, why it happened, and where we can go from there. We also have to, we do have to think about what our next plans are. I would sort of, or I might disagree that we have to think about it, like, right now, tonight. I think it's gonna take some time for us to digest the comments and consider additional possibilities we maybe hadn't thought about. But, you know, I'm happy to have this conversation now. Mike?
First of all, I do want to give, thank the administration for all this hard work. I don't think anybody could ever accuse us of trying to sneak it through because, Tom, you're up there, every group you're up there, the schools, the seniors, the Republicans, the Democrats. I think you were very open about it. And, you know, like I said eight months ago, whatever it was, when we voted yes on the referendum, we didn't vote to spend one dollar, we didn't vote to lay one brick. All we voted was to allow our superintendent to make his pitch as to the community, as to what is what we need, this is why we need it, and this amount it's gonna cost. And the community then has to make its own evaluation, is what we're getting worth the money? And apparently, the answer was no, they didn't feel that we're getting enough of the money. And it is, look, it was, it is a big chunk of money, seventy million dollars, whatever it was. People's taxes have been raised five hundred dollars in here. They've got, they'll get it back in some aspect, it is a big chunk. So, you know, there's a lot for people to think about. So I think the next move really has to be, try to find out, okay, you voted no, why did you vote no? What was it that you didn't like? Maybe you thought we spent too much on this, maybe you spent too much on that, maybe you should have spent more on this and less on this. But, I think it's a work in progress. The fact that it went down once was, obviously, it doesn't make me just gonna give up for the means of the referendum, or just imagine how to follow way to distribute students. But, yeah, I'd agree, we need to start the evaluation soon, but it's, I don't think it's anything necessary that we're going to do right here. I think the first thing we need to do is just find out from the topic, not only what happened, but then why it happened. Because just like with any other history, you want to learn from history, so you don't want to beat yourself. And, you know, I think after we educate ourselves, as to, when we want, when we, we're packing hard and the, the, the posting analysis, then I think we'll be in a position to make the determination as to where, as to this. Otherwise, just, again, thank you to the administration, the public for voting, and with respect to all that everybody is, and we're ready to go.
Yeah, so first, I also want to thank the administration for putting the referendum together and the effort, getting to close, getting the various professionals in to talk to us and talk to the board. And I think the board did understand the report of questions about the referendum. We asked a lot of tough questions throughout the summer. Challenging professionals at several points, so that's there. And I think that it is carried over to the people, to the people I have spoken with. But they are just as conflicted of. It's not just the people who voted no, there's also people who voted yes. Because they voted yes, but not because they felt the schools needed it directly, or the children needed it directly, but they were more concerned about maybe the home values or something like that. So even people who voted yes are still, were still conflicted about the referendum. And the same for the class of people who voted no. So I think when we do the post-analysis and figure out what the next steps are, we need to really look at the people who voted yes and the people who voted no, understand where their feeling, where their understanding was, or if they misunderstood something, or if there's other factors that we didn't consider that went into their voting pattern. I think that's what we all look important, when we look at the analysis at this point to first act of next year, to know what the next steps are.
Any comments?
Okay, um, there's no doubt that after action report or some of those action and analysis is necessary, and certainly what we're doing here now. Certainly what we're doing right now is productive. I honestly wish that we would have been having this conversation months ago. We had ten months, we discussed this. So I'm a little disappointed that we're talking this way about the old referendum right now. I personally never felt rushed. In fact, I agree with Christine that when the state changed the rules and we weren't able to do the referendum in September, they got one to December. I thought that was good for us, because we had an opportunity to really inform and educate the public as to what it was that we were doing. I think there was ample opportunity for the community to learn about the project. And many concerns that I heard, I can bring to Tom, although maybe because I'm a senior citizen, and my kids are already out of school. The folks that I interact with actually were very supportive of the referendum, and were disappointed that it failed. But, you know, that's the move that I handle it, and feel thankful for the members and people. My recollection is that we did, as John said, we all voted for unanimously. So I just wish this conversation had happened earlier. But again, it is very important for us to try and figure out what went wrong. And I would certainly like to point the chorus of those of us who are congratulating, not just you, but are raising you, Tom, for. not congratulations, but are praising you, Tom, for the exhaust through the amount of work that you all know you've put into this. And I think we recruit them for that. I don't consider the referendum failing as a failure on any one person or any one group's part. And I think the post-analysis is going to be so important.
Any comments?
I just also want to say thank the administration for what it did, just recap everything. One of the reasons it also happened was, it's not the board's issue, it's the fact that we voted no. We voted, you know, so especially things like, well, whatever parents and destination to the schools. It did, you know, worry and gather, but it's still, whether it was time resolved or we continue, you know, this December, because they're busy. Those are all factors. It's not so much the board's issue, it's how they should be, you know. That's just my thought on the whole process.
Charlie, you guys have anything?
Yeah, I think that board members are doing the same, the same thing. We're trying to find out why. I've been around more parts of the town than all of your group together since I worked. But in any event, everybody I talked to seems to have different reasons. But all comes down, that's why I think it's good, Dave, that we ask the administration to sort of work together, I'm curious, and send out, I think you said Christine and Mike sent. I'd like to see their comments, just because I'm sure they would read it out probably anyway. But in any event, I have my comments too. I didn't want them boils down to, we do need help in schools. No matter which way you cut it, you have to do something, no matter what that something is, and when that something is. And that's what we, as the professionals, come through. And I think it's important to find out exactly what the thinking is out there in the community. We're going to get some people, it's just their own opinion, and others you're going to hear a lot. Some people say that there were too many liars, there weren't enough liars. You know, so no matter what they say, it's like being a Monday morning quarterback. You do it wrong too often, you didn't throw it up. But in any event, I think everybody's input has to be considered. And I think that we're all saying here tonight. And once we get what that input is, we'll be able to analyze it and see where we're going as soon as we can in the future, because the kids are coming and we need HVACs and safety. So we'll come back and explain, but I think we should take it nice and slow, make sure we have it lined up. More meetings, whatever more meetings may, I don't know. Maybe a forum one night, just rather than a, a, rather have a public board meeting in my zone, or whatever it is. But that's just me, and others might disagree. So I think it's about, let's see what everyone's talking about. And I think each of you should, myself included, come up with a list of what you think would be helpful as we move forward. And maintaining this, there's a lot of stuff out there. That's why I looked down quite a bit at it at home, and looked down at what you guys were speaking. And I think we're going to be successful in the future now with this, all of us to work hard towards that. Thank you. Yeah, thank the administration, since everybody else did. But I'd like to extend it, besides Tom, I think there's two young ladies here who've done a hell of a job on the referendum. One is Christine Slump, a business administrator, and one is Susan Aronella. In fact, I think those two spent a lot of time on the project also, and I think all three of you.
Well, it sounds like what a lot of people have said is that we need to gather the thoughts. I think that I would challenge you to do, to create a list of the different thoughts that you've heard. But go beyond that and ask the people, let them know, what would they support? Because that's part of the problem. You know what they didn't support, but what would they support? So if it's only HVAC and security, let us know. If they're supportive of all purpose rooms, let us know. If they're not supportive of anything for whatever reason, let us know. But I think that we need to go beyond just why they didn't vote, but also what they would vote for and what they would support. So if you could all please collect those lists of reasons why the people didn't support it and what they would support, and then send it to Tom, that would be appreciated. And then we can start talking about this. I think that we should probably have maybe, now January 7th, so reordering, the next meeting, can we have a full discussion list? Twenty-third, yeah. Twenty-third is our, yeah, it's our first full meeting in January. So January 2nd is reordering, we go, what? Yeah, it's one month away, and it's a crazy month, but after another week, everything should calm down. And hopefully, those can talk to your neighbors and friends and find out some more information so we can have this bigger discussion on January 23rd. Do you have anything else you want to, before I enter into public?
Yeah, if you want to, you know if you want to, come on. Listen, I don't, this isn't personal, Dave, but when, in September, when I finally decided to bring up challenging the referendum in more, let's say, a planned manner, with serious thought, where I felt comfortable. But I didn't feel comfortable in meetings or meeting after that meeting. And that's where I feel the rush is leading from. When I felt like that was the meeting we were going to have a discussion, you know, I heard feedback saying, like, oh, I thought we were going to vote on this. Yeah, I feel like we're going to be, you know, intentionally delaying it. Well, that was not my intention. I wanted more thought put into it, and I was rushed by that. That's where that feeling came from. And I just think that, you know, because of that comment, I think, you know, the next meeting is a reordering meeting, and it's to decide who the leadership will be for the next year. And I think we should have that discussion now with time in front of the vote publicly to see what the people's thoughts are on that.
Let me help you out on this. That's entirely inappropriate. Here's the way this works. At the reorganization meeting, people are nominated. That's the time to have the discussion. There's no, this isn't even the board that will choose the president. It may be the same people, but it's not the same board. If you think of it as an organization meeting, which is what it's called, and not a reorganization meeting, which is what it's not called, you will understand that it's a new board. This board can't have that discussion. You have that discussion at reorganization.
Despite it being the same nine members?
Despite it being the same nine.
Is it a small one?
What?
That's, that's an interesting way of looking at it.
It's the right way.
Yeah, it makes sense. Certainly makes a lot of sense.
Well, can I just emphasize?
I still want to add tricks to that.
To emphasize, at some point, some person or people will be nominated. And at that point, before there's a vote, the board can have as full of discussion as it wishes, and that's a public session discussion.
Okay, so now we move to our second public participation session. Anyone wishing to talk about any item that they care to, you can come to the microphone. Now, now, okay. Am I on that now? Okay, I didn't say.
Oh, that's all.
Oh, you got it.
So, oh, because I was at the last meeting, I used to be there.
Uh, name, address, and working.
Peter DeBran for that. I don't know if that's up, I'm just sure.
You can take it off.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, so I was just, the last meeting I did reference was just two ideas of consulting and independent demographer, and independent architect. But I know that may not be what's in the standard for school boards and stuff like that. But the more I thought about it, the more I just felt like they said in this manner. So rather than just being a voice and just coming and voicing things that are on, that I have to know, because I want to know. If you wanted somebody to look at the demography study and learn it, and then consult with somebody independently, that's in my line of work. One day I learned about spine, and I stand learning about facial brows, and those balding. If you wanted me to do that as a, you know, consistent community, I'll do that. Because I think some discussions about people, there's people who talk to me differently. As a resident, they can talk to me differently in your board. There's some question as to how many students were truly in that. And I'm not saying the demographer you had is wrong. But let's just take into account methodology from nineteen thirty. You got an anomaly with a couple of years of COVID, that's across the country. You take that anomaly, and then you add in all these new houses. If you add everything up, you may get a number that may be different than the reality. And that's what I kind of pieced together, was they probably allowed more people in the statistic or whatever measurement you're using for COVID for those couple of years. And I was talking to a hoopla fireman. When they were allowed to build that one, they had to come in and say, we're not going to overbuild the schools, and here's why. When I went through the demography study, it seems like we're going to build a similar type of complex, and you're going to get a lot of the students. So just as a volunteer, you know, I'm supposed to volunteer for what I do too. If you wanted me to do that, I'll lend some time to doing that. As long as it's an independent demographer that I can talk to and learn what we're doing and ask questions with the regional report, maybe it would be at least helpful, because I think that's foundational. And rather than just coming in, you know, speaking a lot, I would offer to do that.
Well, thank you very much, Dave. Now, I believe our report is online?
No, it is, but to really decipher, I think you got to, I'm trying to consult maybe somebody else and see where the weaknesses are, or the gaps are, or reasons. That's my opinion, and I felt like I had a voice.
Well, you know, it's, it's nice, I too am a scientist. And I teach oncologists every day, that's my profession. So I'm used to also looking at these kind of things. Our demographer is an independent demographer, he's not, he's not an employee of the district. He is hired by the district. For us to hire another independent demographer might be.
I just don't know if you're also with it. I understand that, but listen, in kind of real, and on my hand, if somebody's a very successful demographer, they may be just giving numbers that school boards, and I'm not saying this so bad.
I know.
Want to hear. So I'm just a little bit skeptical of that. So I'm just offering.
Well, no, I understand. And as the numbers you heard from, you know, when your friend was talking about the kids coming from the other part, I heard the same numbers from the developer when they were proposing the Alamo bed. They said, these places are so expensive, no one with kids is going to live there. That's what he got said when I heard him at the board, at that council community meeting. And then they said, they, oh, you're going to need so many kids from Booten? Not on Hope, but Booten, very true, very different towns. But no, I do appreciate that. I think that we always bring in a demographer, you can ask the demographer any questions, you can really drill down, and maybe invite some time with him. And I'm sure Tom would help you there. But did you have anything else?
That was interesting, it was kind of our second, I think that's way down the road. Did you guys go with it?
We'll, we'll let you know about that. We'll be in.
Are there any other comments, questions, public? One more public person.
What do you think that's the list for?
Okay, your name, address.
All right, my name is Anna James. I have a lot of eight people now, and I'm a parent of two girls. I'm a parent of two girls in Long Island. And I just wanted to thank everyone. I've had a lot of hours going to win into the referendum, a lot of time, a lot of thought. You're never going to make everyone happy, and I just would acknowledge that and say that. I appreciate, I can just as a member of the public, want to know what my, like, responsibility is for what my options are as far as giving feedback. So you're saying, you know, everyone has agreed, you want public feedback. When, where, how?
Well, you know, I think a good thing might be to send an email. That way we have it as a full letter, and we can digest it along with the other comments that we're hearing. You can say it now, if you want to say it now, it's okay. Either, you do both email if you really want.
Oh, no, I, I just, I'll get my phone together and probably email.
You can come to our next, come to the meeting on the twenty-third and give us a full report. You can read it off your phone.
Well, normally I have a little kids with me, so, the sun coming right now, I'm only going to talk.
I'll give you my card afterwards.
Okay, all right. But yeah, I do, I do thank all, and I voted yes, I support them, but I want to be able to share thoughts and, you know, like, I think that's trying to speak.
Like, do you hear thoughts from your friends? You know, again, you can share them with us. We are open to hearing what the community has to say. And I think that's a very important thing about this board, is that we will listen to the community. We try to listen as best we can. Sometimes people don't say things to us, so we can't hear them at that point. But we are open to receiving comments.
I also noticed that almost everyone said there are meetings being held at all schools in January. They can say meetings and stuff like that. Yeah, so that might be an opportunity to get in touch with the parents. You know, for the things where they've got little kids with some, sorry, but like, I feel like that might just be a good time to remind people that, hey, regardless of which way you voted, I agree with who was supposed to have meaning to ask the question, like, what will you vote for? I feel like that would be a very good question to ask at those meetings. And then extend, here's where to submit feedback, here's where to submit your questions, or, you know, whatever. Thank you.
All right, no other public comments? I would ask to adjourn the meeting, go to the second. Okay, good night, everyone, see you on January 2nd.